Good evening, welcome everyone. The school board meeting is called to order. Will you please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mrs. Bressia.
Here.
Mr. BP.
Here.
And Ms. Iman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda for the evening?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
Thank you Chair Seberg, good evening other members of the board, and good evening to everyone that has joined us tonight. I am very pleased to stand before you to present just a couple of announcements and spotlights for the evening. If our two board members and Dr. Newman would come down. For our first spotlight, we have students from Osborne High School who were exhibitors for the off-the-wall exhibit at the Art Factory. We were told late this afternoon that they might not be able to attend, so I'm going to make sure. Ashley Sanchez, which is an 11th grader at Osborne, are you here? And Christopher Escobar. Okay, so I don't think they were able to make it tonight, and hopefully we'll be able to recognize them at another time. Okay, so, since 1983, The Washington Post has been recognizing teachers who exemplify excellence in their profession. The Teacher of the Year Award aims to celebrate educators who go the extra mile for their students and demonstrate creativity in providing quality instruction that substantively improves how children learn in classrooms across the Washington metropolitan area. Tonight, I'd like to introduce the nominees for Manassas City Public Schools. One of them will be named the Division Level Winner, which is embargoed and will be announced by The Washington Post later this spring. Once named, that person will compete with other local winners across our region to become The Washington Post Teacher of the Year. So we will begin tonight with Baldwin Elementary, Erin Hart. Erin Hart is a 4th grade teacher and is a master teacher in her classroom, bringing excitement and love of learning to students. Ms. Hart has a strong co-teaching relationship with both the ESOL teacher and instructional assistant. She collaborates with school counselors and works closely with parents to support children in both academic and social emotional growth. Ms. Hart is a strong mentor teacher who is patient and takes time to support, educate, and guide her mentees. Congratulations. From Dean Elementary, we have Courtney Steele. Courtney Steele has been teaching 2nd grade for 11 years in Manassas City. Ms. Steele works to build strong relationships with students and their families and regularly attends after-school activities and community events. These student relationships remain strong as students from past years come to greet her daily for the smile and hug that they know will be there. She is an advocate, a dependable colleague, an encourager, and so much more, and we congratulate you. Thank you. From Hayden Elementary, Clara Perez. Hayden Elementary is thrilled to nominate Clara Perez. She's a 3rd grade teacher for The Washington Post Teacher of the Year Award. Ms. Perez is an outstanding and talented professional educator. She has also served as the lead mentor teacher and the Spanish language, dual-language coach. At Hayden, Ms. Perez demonstrates a passion for teaching, a love for student learning and improvement, and dedication to families and her school community. She expertly uses student data to prepare engaging lessons for our students that provides them with more significant opportunities to acquire language. Congratulations to Ms. Perez. And from Round Elementary School, we have Lynn Oliver. George C. Round's 2nd grade team has had the pleasure of working with Lynn Oliver for many years. She instills in students a desire to learn and achieve goals they didn't think they could achieve. Ms. Oliver is passionate and caring, going above and beyond to make sure each child is on grade level and understands assignments. Ms. Oliver loves her students. Through accountability, she pushes each student to reach their fullest potential. Congratulations, Ms. Oliver. And from Weems Elementary, we have Jivka Ja- I'm sorry, Jalatva. Ms. Jalatva is an ESOL teacher at Weems. She fulfills her duties with passion, intellect, and desire to facilitate the academic achievement of all students, but more specifically, the English learners that she serves. As a teacher, she demonstrates a very high level of understanding pertaining to grade level standards, assessment, instruction, and collaboration. Her school says she epitomizes the role of a master teacher. Congratulations. Baldwin Intermediate School, Jennifer Weiser. Ms. Weiser is a 5th grade teacher at Baldwin Intermediate. She's an extraordinary educator. Ms. Weiser truly shines, and her light has been a beacon as we navigate new waters transitioning instructional models. She inspires learning, encourages students to grow, is an expert in her content area, fosters collaboration, and is an example for others to see. Congratulations and thank you. Our next intermediate school, Mayfield Intermediate, Leticia Foster. Ms. Foster is an ESOL teacher. For many of her students, her classroom is their first experience with the education system in our country. Ms. Foster ensures that all of her students feel accepted and valued within her classroom and as a part of our school community. She can quickly identify the academic needs of each of her students and begins providing them with the support needed to start understanding the English language and applying it within the classroom and the community. Congratulations, Ms. Foster. And from Osborne High School, Kent Jeffrey. Mr. Jeffrey has been a science teacher at Osborne since 1994. He taught a variety of subjects and levels: chemistry, honors chemistry, AP chemistry, physics, AP physics, integrated math and science, physical science, and forensic science. If you were to ask his former and current students to describe Mr. Jeffrey's teaching style, they would say that his love for science inspires curiosity and a desire to learn. Mr. Jeffrey's ability to instill a passion for learning derives from his love of the topic, expertise in content, and, most importantly, his ability to build a classroom culture of trust and respect. Congratulations, Mr. Jeffrey. So these are all of our nominees for The Washington Post Teacher of the Year Award. Congratulations to all of you. You don't have to share your cookies if you don't want to. Governor Glenn Youngkin signed a proclamation designating January 15 through the 21st, 2023, as Virginia School Principal Appreciation Week. Each year, the Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals and Virginia Association of Elementary School Principals recognizes the service of principals throughout the Commonwealth. MCPS principals work diligently to provide an optimal learning experience for all students, ensuring they each have access to quality education. Dr. Newman, Chair Seberg, school board members Jill Spall and Carl Hollingsworth, and other division leaders surprised all of our principals with gifts of appreciation last Thursday. Not only were our principals shown love and appreciation, but other administrative leaders in each building were also given small tokens of thanks for the many ways they partner with and support principals in meeting the needs of students, families, and staff. Although the dedicated week has passed, please find moments to send words of encouragement to our principals as they continue to serve our school community. So at this time, would you join me in celebrating our principals as I call them forward? From Baldwin Elementary School, Dave Rupert. From Jenny Dean Elementary, Brian Coleman. From Hayden Elementary School, Karis Brooks. From Round Elementary School, Andrew Wilson. From Weems Elementary, Michelle Hupman. Mayfield Intermediate, Dr. Donnie Frishkorn. Baldwin Intermediate, Juliette Finnegan. Metz Middle School, Gary Morris. And from Osborne High School, Mike Flugrath. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation in your hearing, if that's okay. Whereas principals serve as educational leaders responsible for managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe, vibrant, and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools. And whereas principals must work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community at large to prepare every student for success in life, as productive members of our economy, informed citizens in our democracy, and engaged participants in our communities. And whereas school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school, staff, and student body to embrace and meet high expectations so that every child reaches their potential. And whereas principals are critical to creating strong partnerships between school and home that are based on open communication and a culture that welcomes and engages parents in the learning process. And whereas principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity, responsibility, and trust of parents to guide, direct, nurture, mentor, and impart knowledge to our children while they are at school. And whereas Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education that opens doors to future opportunities and allows each child to fulfill their dreams. Now therefore, I, Glenn Youngkin, do hereby recognize January 15 through the 21st, 2023, as Virginia Schools Principal Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens, and the proclamation is signed by the Governor and the Secretary of the Commonwealth. Thank you, principals, for all that you do. Congratulations for being here tonight. And as I said earlier, we also recognized other leadership in our buildings because we know that our assistant principals, our deans, in the case of Osborne, other administrators in the office play a huge role in supporting the work that our principals do. This proclamation can't even encompass everything that you do, but if we have any assistant principals that are here tonight, would you please just stand where you are and wave to everybody? Thank you for representing Mayfield. All right, so we'll go ahead and take our picture over here. Chair Seberg, this concludes our announcements for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Do we have any school board committee reports? I don't think we have. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. You have a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, second by Vice Chair Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Next is our discussion agenda, and tonight, Mr. Craig Gaffeler, Executive Director of Student Achievement, Dr. Laura Goldsung, Director of Instruction, and Ms. Chris Taylor, Supervisor of Career and Technical Education, will provide information on advanced academic programs and course pathways. Dr. Goldsung, can you hold on just a minute?
Yes, I can.
I forgot citizens comment. Are there any citizens that would wish to speak this evening? Anyone at all? Okay, then we'll go ahead and proceed. Dr. Goldsung, thank you.
The buzz of excited teachers behind us.
Yeah.
So, good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, school board members, and Dr. Newman. This evening, Dr. Casada, Ms. Christine Taylor, and I will share with you updates related to course pathways for rising 9th graders expanding our honors program and updates related to CTE. I will take a few moments just to review the agenda for this presentation to preview the topics that are going to be discussed. We're going to make a connection with the MCPS strategic plan, the vision, mission, and division goals. We're going to talk about some current MCPS data and trends, data points, some connections to accreditation. We're going to talk about increasing access to advanced coursework. We have a vision and mission for our advanced pathways. We'll talk about a timeline, the timeline of a multi-year rollout plan. We're going to use a cohort model. And looking forward to school year 2324, what will those course options be? How are we communicating that with students and our community and our parents? And we're going to talk about a statement of interest. Lastly, we're going to talk about the curriculum review and revision process. That's ongoing, how it connects to the cycle that works, some vertical conversations that we're having. And then I want to tell you about the work of our Advanced Coursework Steering Committee and some of the topics that we're going to be working on for the next five months. When I get done sharing that with you, I'm going to turn this mic over to Ms. Chris Taylor, where she's going to give you some exciting updates about our CTE program. In July of 1922, in July of 2022, feels like it might have been a long time ago, we adopted, you adopted, our five-year strategic plan. The crowning feature declares our organizational purpose. Our overarching goal for the division is student academic success. Key to fulfilling this purpose are the pillars, the structures that provide supports necessary to meet that goal. And today, I'm going to share with you important information related to providing an inclusive and collaborative learning environment for all students. Our vision statement says that each MCPS graduate will be prepared to maximize their potential as a member of our global community. Our mission is to provide a supportive, equitable, and innovative learning environment to empower students to reach their fullest potential. So in the spirit of the spelling bee, which is Thursday evening at OHS at 6:30, I would like to share some information about the word "potential." Potential. The definition of that word is having or showing the capacity to become, to develop into something in the future, or latent qualities or abilities that may be developed and lead to future success or usefulness. This evening, I am pleased to share with you updates to our advanced course pathways that we believe will move us closer to our strategic goals, to meeting the promises made through our vision and mission, to preparing all students to leverage the boundless opportunities that await them after high school by providing broader access to courses designed to help them develop into critical and creative thinkers. Dr. Casada will now share current data related to advanced course options and the relevance to accreditation and graduation.
All right, good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, school board members, and Dr. Newman. I'm, would it help if I advanced the slide? I'm presenting some data to help set the stage for this discussion. First, let's look at the current enrollment of students in advanced courses at the high school level. You will see on this chart that 1,159 students are currently enrolled in one or more advanced courses. This includes honors, honors-integrated, AP, and dual enrollment courses. This is close to half of the total Osborne High School population. You see that the counts vary by subject area, and it's important to note that many students take more than one of these courses. Higher numbers of students are enrolled in advanced English and history and social science courses than in mathematics and science. When we look at enrollment in the highest-level courses, those AP and dual enrollment courses, we see that 460 students are currently enrolled in one or more of these courses. At this level, far more students are enrolled in history, social science courses than in any of the other subject areas, with mathematics again having the lowest enrollment. In history, there are wider variety of AP and dual enrollment options than in the other content areas, since history and social science is so multifaceted, so there's more areas. Taking an honors or advanced course is part of the Virginia graduation requirements. Students are required to complete an honors, AP, or dual enrollment course, or engage in, there's lots of "or's" here, engage in high-quality work-based learning, or earn a career in technical education credential. So any of these things will meet a requirement for graduation. Virginia also offers students the option to earn an advanced studies diploma. Now, this diploma requires students to do everything for a standard, plus also take additional math, science, and history above the standard diploma requirements, as well as some world language courses. Now, this chart shows the percent of students in the class three graduation cohorts who have earned advanced studies diploma. I'm showing you for both Manassas City on the left and for the state as a whole on the right. So you will see that Manassas has held firm around 38% of our students earning these advanced studies diplomas compared to 52% to 53% statewide. So beginning, last piece, beginning with the next accreditation ratings that are in 2324, which are based on data from the 2223 school year, Virginia is now including a college, career, and civic readiness indicator for high schools, affectionately known as the CCCRI, because we know the state loves their acronyms. This indicator is designed to capture how schools are preparing students for college and the workforce. So this measures the percent of students in each graduating cohort who have completed one or more of the following, and here there are again a lot of "or's." So one of them is an AP or IB or dual enrollment class, or someone who's a CTE finisher, meaning they finished a sequence in CTE and earned a credential, so it's a two-part one for that one. Students who have a high-quality work-based learning experience, students who have a service learning experience, or students who take a sequence of JROTC courses and get a CTE credential. So for a school to be at Level 1 for this indicator, the target is 85% of graduates being in one or more of those boxes, right? And a student could be in multiple ones, but they count once as being yes. It's a yes or a no. So looking backwards at the data from 2022, we see that 33% of that cohort had completed an AP or a dual enrollment course, and 32% were CTE finishers who'd earned a CTE credential. A small number of students had also completed either a high-quality work-based learning or service learning experience. So overall, 53% of the cohort was shown to have met the CCCRI requirements. Again, this was not yet part of accreditation, and the data systems for divisions across the state have been working to make sure that things can get captured. It's important to note that efforts have been underway also to ensure that experiences for students are captured, and then more students have access to high-quality work-based learning experiences through their CTE classes. This includes a pilot that's occurring during the current school year and a new career strategies class that will be occurring next year. And again, further discussions about expanding opportunities are also occurring. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation back to Dr. Goldsung to share next.
The purpose of providing advanced program offerings is to develop the capacity of our students to engage in high-quality, integrated academic opportunities. We do this by challenging them with high-quality, integrated learning opportunities, because we learn by doing. How do you become a marathon runner? By running. How do you learn to play a musical instrument? By playing your instrument. Students will only increase their ability- Students will only increase their ability and stamina to engage in sustained, rigorous coursework by doing the work, by being challenged with thoughtful, supported, differentiated opportunities. Furthermore, we believe that when students are presented with increased opportunities to engage in these activities, they will discover within themselves the sparks of curiosity that will fuel sustained motivation. In response to our current data and the adoption of our strategic plan, we are compelled to examine our current practices related to advanced programming and better align them with our strategic goals. We must empower all students to reach their fullest potential so they can leverage the boundless opportunities available to them in the future. We believe that increasing access to integrated honors courses for more students is a critical action to achieving our goals. As we seek to increase the rigor of our instruction for more students, we must also broaden our definition and approach to the idea of integration. We believe integration elevates learning from theory to practice. Integration means supporting students in making real-world connections about how the content they're learning in the classroom translates into actions that might improve or explain current phenomenon within their global community. So, for example, we could ask how climate change is affecting geopolitical relationships. Or we could consider the implications of limiting access to TikTok on the First Amendment right to freedom of speech. We could ask, how can a business owner use algebraic thinking to predict the depreciation value on the equipment in his shop? We believe that the examination of content through multiple perspectives builds conceptual knowledge. It provides relevance to the learner and creates opportunities to discover new interests. So, during the 2021-22 school year, so last school year, advanced program leadership specialists, OHS staff, they engaged in ongoing formal and informal discussions about the need to further differentiate course curriculum for AP, honors, and general education-level courses. The Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee, the GTAC, they're made, that committee is made up of parents, teachers, students, and community members. They're 2122. The GTAC annual report includes a recommendation to continue expanding access to advanced coursework for traditionally underrepresented populations. So, in October of 2022, formal proposal development was undertaken to articulate the steps needed to update curriculum and expand honors course offerings to increase access to integrated content and uncouple integrated courses so that students could further personalize their educational experience. Then, in late November and early December, those proposals were presented for the advanced course pathways were shared with OHS and METS leadership teams, with the promise that we would work elbow-to-elbow as plans met the reality of implementation. On December the 13th, the proposals were shared with the MCPS Board's Academic Committee. So, this month, January of 2023, we met in small groups with school admin, with their content specialists, teacher leaders, to articulate those proposed pathways, and we received feedback. Additionally, the Steering Committee was formed to improve our communication, to increase collaboration, and to finalize those proposed course offerings in response to the feedback. So, part of the communication plan is to bring these updates to you, our school board, and our community through this presentation. And communication will be ongoing, including a presentation in February for parents, families, and students. Updates to the advanced programming will follow a four-year rollout timeline. In response to feedbacks from teachers and administrators, we will begin our implementation with the incoming ninth-grade cohort for the 2324 school year. As they progress through their high school experience, we will revise and update the course pathways for the next year. So, by school year 2627, the implementation plan will have addressed offerings for all contents at all levels. The progressive implementation allows for students who are currently enrolled at OHS to remain on their intended course trajectory. The following course pathways will be available for students entering ninth grade for school year 2324. All ninth-grade honors courses will reflect an integrated curriculum. Additionally, courses have been uncoupled to allow students the flexibility to personalize their learning experiences. So, this means that courses that were traditionally bound together, such as some of our advanced math and science courses, can now be taken independently of each other. So, for example, we might have a student who is passionate about biology and who wants to pursue integrated honors and eventually AP-level courses, but not that interested in upper-level math. So, that student can choose her pathway, his pathway. Uncoupling these courses will provide the student more latitude in choosing a pathway that is tailored to their unique strengths and interests. In recent conversations with our rising ninth graders, there was a tremendous enthusiasm over the customizable nature of the new ninth-grade course offerings. We believe in continuous improvement cycles and recognize that this effort to increase rigor and to develop the capacity of students to engage in high-quality, integrated academic opportunities will require a growth mindset for students, for families, for teachers, and for administrators alike. We endeavor to be a learning organization and will support and partner with the practitioners in the classroom who are planning and delivering this content. Representatives of the Gifted and Talented in Advanced Programs Office will hold an information session for students and families on Wednesday, February 8th, as part of the OHS Curriculum Fair. Rising ninth-grade students will be asked to provide a statement of interest, sharing why they want to engage in honors-level coursework. The purpose of the statement is to serve as an acknowledgement by the student of personal accountability, that being in an honors course means taking on extra layers of responsibility. And most importantly, a way to inform teachers of student intellectual interests prior to the start of the class to help customize learning experiences. The statement of interest will provide teachers and school leaders a window into the individual, and that is the starting point for building a relationship with their students. But we cannot forget that we are serving young people who are just discovering their interests, their passions, their identity. It is imperative that we honor their desire to have a well-rounded experience in high school. They want to march in the band. They want to perform on stage. They want to be on the team. They want to lead a club. And we know this is important for their social-emotional health. And we know that their social-emotional health is critical to supporting success in advanced programming. We want to empower our young people to know that they can engage in the challenges of advanced coursework without fear. The statement of interest is not evaluative and will not be used to disqualify a student for enrollment in advanced courses. This is not a barrier to enrollment. It is not an application. It's intended to guide reflection and provide an opportunity for self-advocacy and ownership of this process. It may be used to inform conversations with school counselors and teachers and help inform teachers and admin and counselors of student perspectives that are related to planning for additional offerings down the way, for additional pathways. So, the statement of interest is going to be collected through a Google form. Details will follow. However, the link is going to be made available through their eighth-grade advisory class, but it'll also be on the website, the course catalog, through the school counselor. We're going to have a QR code, so they can even just do it right on their phone. And students will automatically receive a copy of their response through email. There were some sample questions on the bottom of this slide. Why do you want to take the class? And what do you think it means to be in advanced class? To be in an advanced class? What do you, so, we're not asking for a dissertation. We're asking for a little picture of why you want to participate. So, division-wide, we are and will continue to evaluate our current and previous practices through a lens of continuous improvement. Broadly, this work is an ongoing process through collaborative learning teams and a cycle that works. There are also groups working on more focused evaluations for specific content. For example, we have a team of teachers and content specialists revising the curriculum for Advanced Math VI. And as part of their process, we are now asking about vertical alignment and the implications of the K-5 curriculum. What experiences did our students have prior to Advanced Math VI? And what opportunities will they have after? That question has us working closely with METS Middle School. And we're looking at the Math VII honors class and Algebra I, and we're going to have to revise our work around that, because we, none of this exists in a vacuum, right? Our students are with us K through 12. We were planning for them K through 12. Evaluating our own practices through the lens of increasing the rigor will strengthen the capacity of our instructional staff and, in turn, better prepare our students to engage in that high-quality, integrated academic opportunity. So, on January the 17th, the 24-member Advanced Coursework Steering Committee met to organize around the work needed to implement these pathways. During our first meeting, the committee met by content area, and they finalized the pathways for rising ninth graders so that information would be available for the upcoming curriculum information sessions. So, the committee will now work in five subcommittees to directly plan for and address topics that have emerged from the dialogue about the process. Group one will address increasing the rigor in classrooms. They will establish a working definition of academic rigor, which can serve as a guidepost and norm for teachers across our division. They will also identify needs among instructional staff seeking to increase the level of rigor in their courses. Group two will address differentiation and how to plan activities that meet each student where they are in the advanced classroom. They will establish a working definition of differentiation, which can serve as that guidepost and norm for students across our, for teachers across our division. We will also identify needs among our instructional staff seeking to increase the quality of the differentiation in their courses. Group three will look at the process of assessment. They will establish assessment norms, which will serve as a guide for teachers at Osborne as they plan assessments as part of a cycle that works. This work overlaps each other. They will consider the purpose of the assessment, the role of feedback, what format will those assessments take? And they will also identify the needs of the staff seeking to improve the quality of those assessments in the courses. Group four will look at increasing access to advanced coursework through the lens of our professional learning community structure, a cycle that works. How can we use our established CLT processes to articulate the difference between on-level, advanced, and honors, and even AP work? How can we differentiate between those? And we, how can we use that CLT process to really critically interrogate what we're doing in our classrooms? Group five will look specifically at the curriculum. They will identify existing sources of curriculum within the four core, our VDOE standards, serve as our curriculum. Division purchased course materials, teacher-created materials. What resources do we have? And they're going to identify curriculum development needs for those four core departments for those rising ninth-grade courses. The work of these subcommittees is underway, and I look forward to providing you updates on our progress as we move forward with these preparations for school year 2324. And so, now, I'm going to turn this mic over to Ms. Christine Taylor, and she's going to have some updates about our CTE program for you.
Thank you, Chair Seberg, and Vice Chair Stevens, and School Board, and Dr. Newman for having me tonight. You know I love talking about the loves of my life, which is CTE. So, I'm happy to be here. We're going to talk a little bit today about the current pathways that we have, some of the revisions, how we're tackling K through six to expose them to pathways a little bit earlier, the transition from METS to Osborne and how that's looking, our program of study, our graduation requirements, and then, of course, the newest and greatest high-quality work-based learning. So, let's see. Good. All right. So, when we first started this conversation, many of our pathways lacked clarity and definition around the courses and the sequence of classes. So, as you know, in CTE, courses build upon each other. And some of our courses had sequences, and some had more opportunities than others. And so, one of the things that we were really focused on this year is trying to get more of a cohesive sequential. And I'll talk about that in a second. Limitations due to course scheduling. So, many of you know that our, I'll use cosmetology as an example that requires 840 hours of curriculum time in the classroom. And so, that limits some of our students in what they're able to take or what they might be able to pursue. No work-based learning option for high school credit, limited opportunities for advanced-level courses, and then, limited exposure to pathways prior to high school. So, we came up as a CTE team, and we worked with, we definitely didn't do this decision-making in a bubble, and I want to share that with you because it's really important to me that all pieces are included. So, we took student surveys. We have 1,495 student surveys that we did with middle school and high school students. We did a business survey in Manassas. We got 52 businesses in Manassas to give us feedback. We worked with our Virginia Department of Education, our leaders in all of our career clusters for some of our pathways to expand. We worked with our CLT teams. So, we have 11 different pathways at the high school. Each one of those has a leader for the team. We worked with the teachers. And then, we also worked with our advisory committee meetings, and we have multiple advisory committees for career and technical education. Based on all that data and all that research, here's some of the things that we are hoping to implement. A rotation of course offerings for our auto tech and cosmetology. And so, because the cosmetology license, it's fantastic, but it really limits some of our students. And so, next year, we'll be offering nail tech, which they can get certified in, beauty salon assistant. And so, just multiple options in cosmetology for students who still want to pursue that career path, but might be limited due to other course requirements that they need to do for graduation. Auto tech, we've split up to one, two, and three with the hopes that senior year, they'll be able to go out into the community and do work-based learning. Work-based learning options for 11th and 12th grade students, career strategies, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, but that will allow our students to have a high school credit for the work hours that they put in with our community. Course completer and sequential options at the high school level, and I have a cheat sheet for you on that, so I'm going to hold off explaining all that. And then, increased dual enrollment and certifications that are offered at the high school level. And I'll give you an update on that in a second. So, first and foremost, our K through six pathway exposure. It's really important that we start to plant the seeds for our students, open their eyes, give them those experiences at a younger age. And so, some of the things that my team, and I, and I have to say, I have two of my team here. This is not a Chris Taylor Show for any stretch, but Eric Godwin- here, this is not a Chris Taylor Show for any stretch, but Eric Godwin and Tara Eason are both part of our CTE team, working with all of these improvements. We have offered hour of code, field trips. We have a lunch and learn pilot called Love My Life, and we started that last week. So, we're going to pilot that and see how that goes. We had fifth and sixth graders who got to listen to a guest speaker, a former Osborne graduate who is now doing software engineering on naval ships. So, the kids got to hear her and talk to her and ask her questions. And then, each month, we have a different speaker come in. TIGBEE is actually a free resource. It's a grant in all schools. Eric and Tara have been to all of our elementary, intermediate, middle, and high schools, talking to our admin teams and teachers about enrolling in this program. They do live interviews every week on different pathways that kids can watch. They're about five minutes, and then the students have an opportunity to type in questions, and then they'll answer the questions for the kids. Virginia Career View has also been shared. It's a phenomenal resource for students in our elementary, intermediate, and middle school grades to foster some communication about possible career paths. Do you want to work by yourself? Do you want to work with a group of people? Do you want to work indoors? Do you want to work in a cube? Do you want to work from your couch at home? So, it just depends, but lots of opportunities for students to engage in career path communication. Community partnerships, projects, and grants, we have a couple really exciting ones coming on the horizon. We just received a very nice grant from one of our local business partners to do a sustainable community garden. So, we're very excited about that, but -- and that's not the only one, there's a bunch. And community -- and guest speakers. So, we've been working on opening kids' eyes at a younger age in hopes that we'll instill something that, oh, gosh, I really want to do that. This is the piece of paper that I gave you in case it's kind of hard to read on the screen, but this lays out the pathways at Metz and at Osborne High School. So, unfortunately, I love paper, so I did do a printed copy for you, so feel free to mark it up and ask questions later. But you'll see in Metz Middle School, we have three strong pathways for career and technical education, and then an arts AV technology pathway. So, this year, we started business and information tech. We have digital input, digital tech foundations, make it your business. So, that's for seventh and eighth graders next year to create an entrepreneurship and things that they'll do within the school to run a business. That pathway leads into Osborne High School's computer science pathway and the business and marketing pathway. So, you'll see those courses underneath. Technology education at Metz this year is inventions and innovations, technological systems, and for the first time, we are offering robotics as a high school-level class, and it is right at the cap. So, it's exciting. And those students today actually got to go to Micron to check out the production of wafers, and so, that was pretty exciting for them along with a bunch of other things. So, technology education goes into architecture and construction pathway, our engineering and technology pathway, and our auto technology pathway. Family consumer sciences, teen living, career investigations, and life management are now offered this year at Metz. That's going to go into health and medical pathway here at the high school level, criminal justice, and our cosmetology pathway. So, I took the liberty of including all the classes underneath there, so you guys can take a look at those and kind of peruse those as you go through. Arts AV tech, we have the art, gifted art, all-year art, and music technology classes. That feeds into our visual art, commercial photography program, and our work-based learning. So, art is interesting because it's a fine arts elective at the middle school level, but when you get to the high school level, it flips to a CTE elective. And so, I did go ahead and put that on there for you. One of the things that we wanted to make sure that we were doing with parents, with our school community, with our teachers, our counseling teams, and our business partners, was to make sure that we were being transparent about what can be offered, how we offer it, and what those classes look like. So, I did once again, print you off a copy of the program of studies for career and technical education. And in the slides, I have a sample for you for health and medical pathway. So, in each one of these one-pagers, which is currently being translated so that we can share it with parents, and we will offer these, we offered a preview of these at the Metz Middle School scheduling night last week, and then we'll offer one in February at the Osborne High School level. But you'll notice on here, there's a little information on the pathway. You'll notice the suggestions or the recommendations for our classes. So, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade classes. It gives students and parents and our community an overview of what the options are for our students. We also included the certifications and what's available. So, in health and medical, you can take a look. We can get certified nurse aide. You can get the EMT certification, or you can get the NASM, and that is the personal trainer certification. You'll notice that we added some occupations on here, as well as is this a pathway for you, some questions for kids to think about. And then, on the back of it, it shows the different classes and a little blurb of what they entail. We hope that this will help our whole team, our village, who are helping to support our kids and do what's best for kids, and answer some questions upfront and just be a little bit more clear on it. We also have for parents to help them and students, as well as our counseling team, at Metz and OHS, we have a digital document that talks about each and every class, if there's a prerequisite, what the grade level is for, and how many credits it's worth, as well as if it requires field experience, is it a dual enrollment option, and any other pertinent information for that. So, I just want you to know that there's multiple ways that we're hoping to share the news about pathways. CT opportunities related to students and graduation requirements. So, Dr. Goldsung gave you a phenomenal overview of all the pieces for advanced programming. Right along with that, and the theme of potential, you can see that for certifications, we offer 24 different certifications for students to become certified. There are at least two options in each pathway for certifications for students. So, once again, trying to meet students where they're at, supporting students in a career path that they're interested in. High-quality work-based learning, we have the career strategies class. We're looking to incorporate into EPF service learning, and you'll notice on our CCI that one of the requirements or the possible requirements for reporting is service learning. So, I'm going to talk about service learning, so I'm just going to table that for a second. And then, currently, about 200 students are enrolled in work-based learning from our senior class at Osborne High School. So, not quite half. I do think the number's slightly conservative. I think it'll go up as Eric and Tara and I have been busy enrolling students for that. And then, of course, at the very bottom on the left, dual enrollment. So, currently, we offer EMT and auto tech for dual enrollment. Next year, we did receive one additional approval for our business management classes and our entrepreneurship class. There are still several others pending that we haven't heard from Nova yet. So, high-quality work-based learning. I just want to take a quick second and do a brief overview. So, we offer internships, school-based enterprise, clinical experiences, externships, service learning, mentorship, and youth-registered apprenticeship. Internship requires 280 hours, and so, that's probably the biggest commitment on your options for high-quality work-based learning. Internship, we have several students who are doing an internship right now. Probably the most familiar is Joey Frazier, who is working with the city of Manassas and their vehicle maintenance department. School-based enterprise is a store or an entrepreneurship opportunity that students do at school. So, for example, this would be cosmetology, when they open the doors on Fridays to have people from the community come in and have cosmetological services. Mr. Riley also with auto tech. He opens the doors to have people come in and get basic maintenance done on the cars. This also includes our special needs population. We have students who run the store, and they sell snacks during the school day or school supplies, or we can also count some of the other, like, smaller, little programs and initiatives that they have at the school. Clinical experience really goes with our EMT students and our certified nurse aide students, and those clinical hours are based on the requirements from the Virginia Department of Ed, the Virginia Board of Nursing. Those dictate how many hours are in there. So, for example, for a certified nurse aide, they need 40 hours of clinical time. They have already started those hours, so they're working with Manassas Health and Rehab and Lake Manassas Health and Rehab to get hands-on time in the field. Externship is probably the most popular one that most of our students have. It requires 40 hours, and students go out into the workforce. Some of those externships, I believe all of ours this year are paid internships for students, but we do offer ones that are unpaid as well. It just depends on the company. Service learning requires, Eric, I'm going to get it wrong, 140?
Service learning is a hundred hours.
No hours, I'm sorry. No hours. I knew I was going to get it. Service learning is the one we're looking at doing for our econ, personal finance class. And that particular course is a requirement for every single student at Osborne High School. And so, we've had some brainstorming sessions with Dr. Goldsung and Dr. Casada in our EPF team. We've also included some of our admin and our on-time graduation coordinator at Osborne so that we can incorporate what we would call a capstone or service learning project in EPF. And that would require people from the community coming in and working on a needs-based project in our community for our students related to finance. Mentorship is 140 hours, and we have a pilot program in place right now. We have seven students enrolled. We have five engineers who have mentored our students, starting at the beginning of ninth grade, and they will carry them through through 12th grade. And so, we've had several socia ls with mentors and the mentees. They meet anywhere from once a week to every other week with their mentors, and we provide opportunities for that there at the high school. And then, last but not least, youth registered apprenticeships, and that is dictated by the Department of Labor and Industry, and that is not a set amount of hours. However, if the student wants high school credit for it, then there would be hours assigned to it. So, that one can go either way. Now, in order to get these all to count for high school credit, next year, we're proposing a career strategies class. Students who have early release would like to work. Many of them have early release and work already, but they don't have the opportunity to get a credit for it. So, we would enroll them next year in career strategies. The idea behind it is the first four to six weeks of school, they would be reporting to Osborne High School every day for what we would call intensive workplace readiness training. So, business etiquette, calling in, looking someone in the eye, shaking a hand, a proper email, all those pieces, writing a resume, practicing interview skills. We would have businesses come in and interview students at that time to place in the workforce. And so, that first four to six weeks would be critical in laying the groundwork for the expectation and incorporating the business piece of it. Students would go out into the workforce, end of those six weeks, come back in January for a refresh, a week in January where we touch base, we make sure everything's good, refresh, and then at the very end of the year, they would return to us again. Having said that, one of the biggest successes of this particular program is the village, right? So, work-based learning is phenomenal, and I am just humbled to say that here in Manassas, we have businesses knocking at the door daily, trying to work with our students, support our students in work-based learning. And so, so grateful for their participation already. This is a soft start this school year, and we're almost at half of the senior class, so I'm pretty excited about that. I see lots of potential, in the words of Dr. Goldsung, our potential, higher rigor, the connectedness with our community, with our parents, with our teachers, with our counseling team, students. It is going to take all of us for our students to find this success. But I also feel like, as far as advanced programming goes, this falls right into advanced programming. We are truly getting our students out there and making sure that they are ready for success post-graduation. So, I'm really excited about that piece of it. That's all for CTE, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions. Love questions, the teacher part of me, and be willing to entertain, as well as I know that my colleagues would be more than happy to ask any questions or answer any questions as well that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Dr. Goldsung, Dr. Casada, and Ms. Taylor for your presentation this evening. Questions from the board? From our student representatives, we can always count on you. Mr. Beebe.
Thank you for your presentation. The first question I have is about the CTE classes. Have the CTE classes that have been added so far been more concentrated in certain fields, or have they been more wide-ranging in what's being offered now?
Great question. So, next year, we're not adding any additional classes. What we -- well, I say that loosely. So, we had an intro to marketing class, and we had an intro to business class. What we did is offer principles of business and marketing next year. So, we've taken two classes, and we've put them towards a more common, so that way, we're not limiting students' pathways. So, we aren't really adding any additional classes next year. Right now, our pathways are, for the most part, even, and by that, I say even loosely, but knowing what we can offer and what we have offered, we've tried our best to level those. And so, if you look at that little spreadsheet, not the spreadsheet, but the little graphic with all the classes that connect, right? So, that tells all the classes. Now, some of them are limited, and so, for example, certified nurse aide, we can't really add a whole lot of classes to that pathway because that's what it is. So, those that we can, we have, and in hopes of it being fairly equitable.
And then, I had another question that had to do with the pathway for ninth graders. One of the statements that was made earlier was that all of the honors courses have some sort of integrated curriculum. Can you please explain what you mean by that?
Absolutely.
And how that's different from the current honors classes that people take?
Thank you for asking that question. So, I've been doing what was post-it notes, so I sort of just kind of imagine with me. So, right now, we have honors, integrated honors, and then up here, we would have like AP and DE. What we're doing is saying that the kids that are in honors should experience, must experience, integrated curriculum. So, we're combining or putting together, or really broadening, the idea of integrated curriculum to everybody who's in an honors class. Does that make sense?
I think so. Thank you.
Any other questions from our student representatives? Okay. Mrs. Spall?
Sorry. I wrote down a lot of questions. I'll have to see if I can interpret them all, but we did enjoy our tour today with Micron and are just so impressed with how they're ready to train and pay critical and creative thinkers. It was just very inspiring to see. On page number eight, I just wanted to ask, sorry, slide number eight. It mentions AP, IB, and dual, but not honors on that particular slide. Is that right?
That is correct. So, is a graduation requirement, an honors class can count, but to be part of and count for the college, career, and civic readiness indicator, it does not include honors. It only includes AP, IB, which we don't offer, and dual enrollment, or all of those other options that you see.
Okay. And I wrote, slide number 12, I wanted to ask, so we talked about integrating, but then this one, I think, talks about uncoupling. So, I'm just trying to figure out, are we exactly which classes are going to be uncoupled?
I'm going to ask Anthony and Carolyn. So, Anthony Vargas, who is our supervisor of advanced programs in Gifted and Talented, and Carolyn Waddell, who is the gifted resources teacher for Osborne High School. This is my team, right here. We have been leading this work, and so, it's the IMS. I don't want to say it wrong. That's why I'm asking Anthony to help me with this.
Yeah, so it's the IMS courses, right? Integrated Math and Science. So, they had to take math. So, they had to take math coupled with their science class, and then, our integrated humanities courses, which are our English and our social studies course.
So, if we look at that pathway, there's the integrated algebra and integrated geometry and integrated chemistry, but they can take integrated honors, English Language Arts, or the history, or the math courses, or the science courses, independently of each other.
Or they can continue to take them together, right? Or they could take three of the four, right? So, we're just opening up the opportunities for the students to take what they would like.
Okay.
So, uncoupling doesn't mean they can't continue to take them together. It just means that there's an option for them to further personalize based on their interests.
Okay. And so, that's gonna follow through to high school as well? They're gonna uncouple all of those?
They're staying coupled at Metz, but we're gonna uncouple them at OHS.
Okay. And I did hear at Metz Curriculum Fair, you know, a lot of talk about with the higher-level math and English classes, there was a lot of discussion that night about rigor, and, you know, children that really want to, you know, follow their own level of inquiry. That's probably butchering that.
No, you didn't.
But, you know, they wanted to pursue their own interests within that curriculum, that they defined what the student would look like. So, I think that that's following along, you know, and preparing parents ahead of time for what it is that you're discussing, so I did appreciate that. What happens if a child, though, doesn't do a statement of interest? Do they just have to sit down and whip one out, or?
No, I think that that's a conversation.
Okay.
I think that's a, you know, this child doesn't have one. We contact the student. We go, we find the student, we ask the teacher. Usually, it's, "I forgot to do one," or "I didn't do one," or "I didn't understand it."
Sure.
Right? And so, I often see that that is the opportunity to connect in person, because that's the whole purpose of that statement of interest, is to start building that relationship. And so, that's an opportunity for Anthony, or for Carolyn, or for me, or for their teacher, or for anybody, you know, a caring adult, to just go and say, "Hey, let's talk about this. You've registered for this course. Did you know that you registered for this course? Did you do it on purpose? We're excited to have you. Let's talk about why you would wanna do that." So, I just, that's what would happen. That's what would happen.
Okay. And is there a place for us to look online, I guess as a board, or even as the public? Who is the steering committee, and who is the academic rigor committee, or are they the same?
So, the steering committee is twenty-four, let me look at what slide.
Was that on, sorry?
No, that's right. The names aren't on there, but I can send those to you.
Okay.
We have thirteen representatives from Osborne High School. There are three from Metz that are gonna come in for certain conversations, and eight people from Central Office.
I did see that slide then, thank you.
But I can send you that.
Are they teachers?
Yes, most of them, it's teachers, it's content specialists, it's the department chairs, teacher leaders, but a lot of teachers.
Okay. And then, academic rigor committee?
That would be representatives of those twenty-four people. We just broke those into five committees. So, it's probably about four people who are on the rigor committee. Four people are leading the discussion about curriculum.
Okay, okay.
And so, we can send you all of that.
Sure. And they meet during the school day?
We meet, like, it was at three-thirty on Tuesday, so it's kind of right after school.
I think, oh, do we advertise our school-based enterprise? Are we letting people know in the community that Mr. Riley is ready for, or that cosmetology?
The shops open?
Yes.
Sure. Yes, they do advertise. So, they have, it goes out in our smores newsletter, it goes out with our CTE, it's on our website, so there's different ways that we advertise. Usually, Mr. Riley has more work than he knows what to do with. So, the advertising, to be honest, very upfront, is somewhat limited. I mean, his students are still learning, and so, some of the requests he has to like rebuild an engine, they're not quite there yet.
Sure.
So, it's paced. So, for example, once they learn like oil changes, tire rotations, then they come in for those types of things. So, a lot of it is word of mouth from the students, and they share, and the Manassas City Vehicle Maintenance Department is great at supporting our kids as well with bringing in vehicles or those sort of things. So, yeah.
That's great. I know I've seen cosmetology advertisements over the years. I didn't remember anything real recent, but my experience is that Mr. Riley is very busy, but I just didn't know for sure.
Yeah. Oh, definitely, though.
If they were advertising. I think that's great. Career strategies with the soft skills is gonna be very exciting, too. I can't wait to hear about that next year.
I think so, too.
Thank you very much. I think that's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Good questions. Mrs. Fresh?
Yes. Good questions. Thank you. And now, I have to go through, because I think you asked some of the questions I wanted to ask. So, I wanted to start at slide five, which is the chart with everybody who's enrolled currently in advanced courses, who's in AP versus who's in AP. So, I see, so, we have quite, there's quite a differential between you. We have seven hundred and seventy-two people who are honors up for English, but only one fifty-five who are AP and up. So, have we thought at all about this consolidation process, moving more kids onto the AP pathway? How many of those kids are we anticipating will move up to AP? And how many kids do we think are going to leak back down to regular? Have we thought about that?
I'm back here shaking my head behind Dr. Casada. We've thought about it. That's the reason why we wanna do this. We want to prepare students to be able to enter into those AP courses, into those dual enrollment courses. Possibly, more students apply to go to governor's school. Certainly, if you're going to enter into college directly after high school, or if you're gonna be career-ready, those are, those really high-level critical thinking skills, application skills are necessary. Our, we're at the foundational level of sort of recognizing that our integrated honors courses are now gonna be designed purposefully to, like I said at the beginning of the presentation, to prepare students to engage in that work. That is the goal, is to get as many students ready for that opportunity and encourage them to take that opportunity, to develop in them the willingness. We have to provide them the safe place to take the risks in the classroom, to engage in that work that they think might be too hard, but we know. It's right to be right there in that, what we call the zone of proximal development. Right? We want them to be at that edge of almost a little discomfort, uncomfortable, right? That's where the learning happens. And so, our integrated honors courses are going to be designed to get them ready for that ultimate goal. At this point in time, I can't tell you numbers. What I can tell you is that these five committees, along with every CLT, every team, the discussion of rigor that we're having through a cycle that works, that's our goal, is to get as many of them prepared for what we know is waiting for them and the opportunities. I mean, we had, Mr. Joffrey was up here tonight for Washington Post Teacher of the Year, right? And he's an AP teacher. I want as many kids as possible to experience instruction in his classroom. So, I can't give you a number, but I can tell you that that is, that the integration of and bringing integrated curriculum into all of our honors courses is purpose-built to get them into those and get them ready for those AP courses.
Are we planning on tracking that? Are we going to be watching kids as we? Okay, good, I see some nods, that's good. Because one of the, like, kind of, one of the thoughts I had when I saw the statement of intent was like, okay, I understand a statement of intent for wanting to move up in academic course rigor, but part of me was like, maybe we should require it if someone wants to buckle down a level two, like, you know, okay, why are you moving from AP down to regular, or whatever it is? That's just a thought, that's not really a question. So, I've heard some feedback in the community, and, you know, people get, oh, did you wanna say?
Good evening. I just wanted to add, you know, when we look at moving students to AP, part of the work of the steering committee is going to be, how are we supporting students? And so, what supports, in a very systematic way, can we provide students so that they can be, feel like they can be successful and feel like they're not fearful of trying a, the highest-level class that we offer? And part of the steering committee is also working at, how are we gonna be supporting our teachers in preparing them to be ready to support students with differentiation, to support and scaffold instruction? And also, how are we communicating with our students? How are we educating our community, so our students, our families, about what it is we offer in terms of advanced placement courses?
So, I've heard, you know, I think all of us have been getting a lot of correspondence from the community where people are worried about their honors classes being taken away. One thing that I have, that people have brought to me is this idea like, oh, they're only eliminating honors because the honors, we don't get any, you know, public credit for who's enrolled in honors. You know, we report to VDOE who's enrolled in AP. And so, I just wanted to give you guys an opportunity to respond to that feedback.
I appreciate that opportunity. Engaging in the highest, high-quality, integrated, application-driven learning should be available for everybody. There's no, there's no reason why asking those questions that I asked earlier about the man who's gonna use algebraic thinking to, you know, determine depreciation, there's no reason why we can't ask that question in all level of courses that we provide. We have, the learning has to be relevant to our students. But it has to be relevant at a level that challenges them to engage, challenges them to engage in critical thinking. And we need to differentiate, and just our course offerings between a general education, which is great, right? A general education, here are the VDOE standards. We can still deliver those with an integrated lens. In our integrated honors courses, we're gonna be very intentional about making those applications-based. And so, the lesson delivery in those classes is going to be, is going to be different. It's important for kids to have a place where they can develop the skills that they need so that they can decide for themselves, if I wanna be an AP student, if I wanna apply to gov school, if I want, if I wanna apply to different kinds of colleges. For me, the honors program is a critical step for us preparing students in Manassas City to take advantage of those boundless opportunities. It's just part of the overall experience here. It's our job to provide them that. Does anybody else wanna?
I would just respond to that and just to simply say, we're not taking things away from students. We're trying to enhance opportunities for students. And we're doing this because it's what we feel is best for kids and for their learning. When Mrs. Spall talked about Micron, talking about where they want creative and critical thinkers, that's why we're doing this. We wanna make sure that we are doing it in a very thoughtful way that is preparing our students for whatever they wanna do when they leave us at Osborne.
So, going to slide twelve, and this is where I have to figure out where Mrs. Spall asked my questions. So, going into the 2021, going back in time, ongoing discussions regarding the need to further differentiate curriculum, I'm just wondering, how did that, how was this need identified? How did it come to the division's attention?
Well, I'm gonna do my best on that. Yes, I started as the Director of Instruction in August of this year. Last year, I served as the Director of Assessment and Accountability. And prior to that, I was a principal at Baldwin Elementary School. So, I am, I'm gonna say I've entered this conversation sort of midstream. But as I oriented myself to my position and spoke with the content supervisors that worked side-by-side with me every day, each of those, when we had our one-to-one meetings, each of them brought those up independently. Oh, I've talked with, or I've spoken with, and I spoke with Anthony and Carolyn as we came on board. So, it seems that those conversations were just happening in smaller meetings, in, like I said, formal and informal settings. And in the fall, it kind of came to, everything sort of came together, and we had about six of those conversations in one week. And I said, "We need to look at this. We're all talking about the same thing, so we need to look at this in a more formalized way."
I appreciate your leadership on that. Thank you. So, I wanna go back to December 2023. The, there, I remember watching that presentation to the academic committee, and it was mentioned that an audit had been conducted examining the differences between honors and AP, determining, for example, we do not eat honors calculus and AP calculus at the same time. Let's move this together. How, I was wondering, what, how was that decision made? Like, what were the mechanics of that audit? Because we have heard feedback, you know, from our last meeting, for example, of somebody, of a student who came and said she does feel there is a difference between honors calculus and AP calculus. So, I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak on that.
All right. So, we, do you wanna talk a little bit about that? Carolyn, you, I'm gonna just, I want the people who did the work to be able to speak to the work.
Yeah, so, we really wanted to get down to the student experience level, right? So, we did things like look at the syllabi that was used in the class, right? And compared the syllabus. We also looked at just the different assessment types that are used in the different classes, right? We also looked at the different student activities, and we realized that there was no difference, right? So, it was the same syllabus used for both classes, it was the same activities used for both classes. We also had conversations directly with the teacher of those courses, and they even told us that, you know, it's similar work that the students were doing. And so, we did not find functional or structural differences in what was presented to the students based on those levels. In some instances, there were students, when we get to more of the foreign language end, where there are students sitting in the same actual course when one is labeled honors and AP, and again, it wasn't any different.
So, how did we come to, were there, so, we've come to this specific strategy. Were there any alternatives we considered but discarded along the way? You know, is this, you look like you wanna say something.
I did, did I? I was jumping up. Yes, we considered keeping it the same way. We considered doing, looking at the, I'm gonna just call it general education, but it's just, you know, plain, like, we'll use the English, right? English nine, honors English nine, integrated honors English nine. Those three courses, and I think they're even, those are the ones we're offering this year. So, what, and I'm not taking on English nine, right? That's not the one, I just, as an example, we said, we could keep it this way. And then, what we could do is look at honors English nine, at the curriculum they're using, at the assessments, at the learning activities and the instructional materials. And if we were going to increase the rigor of this class, and we were going to offer the sorts of learning opportunities that we think, you know, that all students need to have, the course that we were designing was integrated honors English nine. When we were looking at that, that, just the plain honors class, if we were going to critically examine the curriculum and what we would do to increase the rigor, we already had that class in our course catalog.
Speaking of integrated and all that stuff, I'm trying to get my head around high school world. It's not my family's stage of life right now, so if I ask silly questions, please excuse me. So, the slide fourteen, these are the classes that will be offered in the four core subjects for ninth graders next year.
Yes.
Okay. Because I see, because I was a little surprised to see, or not to see, we have a math class that we currently offer, which is like Introduction to Numeracy or something like that for ninth graders, Developing Numeracy, I think it's called, and that's not on there.
That's not part of our advanced pathway, that's, but there, so, you make a good point, and you bring up a great point, is that this slide is specifically to what courses we will be speaking with those students who are interested in pursuing advanced coursework. There is, there's an entire catalog of courses that are available for learners at every level.
Well, I got confused, because when I read the course, the, our current Introduction to the Environment, which is under Science, that, to me, sounded like a similar level of science as the Developing Numeracy was in math. And so, maybe I misunderstood that, but it looked like we included it for science but not for math, and I was wondering.
It's a good point. It's a great point. I think it might have to do with the prerequisites, in that you could be a very, very strong language arts student and be looking at advanced pathways in language arts. And it's that example that's the reason we're uncoupling that. And maybe you're not as strong in science, or it's not as much of a passion for you. And so, depending upon your prerequisite knowledge, you could enroll for- And so depending upon your prerequisite knowledge, you could enroll for Intro to the Environment and be in Integrated Honors English nine.
Gotcha. All right, and this is, I'm going to build on one of the questions that Mrs. Spall asked because, yeah, because she asked a question and you gave an answer. And I want to make sure you, I understand your answer. And it was between uncoupling and integrating. So I understand now if you want to take AP Biology, for example, you, or no, I think honors Biology, you must also be enrolled in a higher-level math class. And you're uncoupling that and seeking to put more higher-level math just into the integrated Biology.
So as it's currently, we have a group of students, a cohort of students, whose classes are bound together. They're higher-level maths, math, and they're higher-level science. And you, when you enroll, you enroll in both of those. And so what we are recommending, what we would like to see, is that our students be able to take those apart. Because a lot of times we'll see that maybe a student isn't comfortable in their, you know, they feel stronger in one area over the other. And it might prevent someone from wanting to enter into advanced coursework if they feel like, or integrated coursework, if they feel like they have to do both.
Right.
So.
But the idea of the integrated class is that it does incorporate more, like, that you get as part of your curriculum in, for example, AP Biology. You get more higher-level math in the Biology curriculum without taking.
Right, and so traditionally, right, and so traditionally, it's been math and science has been integrated.
Right.
So now what we're saying is we also want to broaden that definition of integration. Because it's not just science that integrates math. It's business, it's politics, it's social studies. So that's what we're saying as well, is that we want to broaden that definition of integration. So it's not, we're not always just talking about math and science. But it could be history and science. It could be all of this.
Thanks. As somebody who has, who had an aptitude for Biology but not an aptitude for higher math, I thank you for making this change. I'm fully supportive of that. I have more questions, but Mrs. Spall, you said you had a follow-up, so while we're on the topic, I want to, if it's okay with the chair, I don't, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bresja. I'm just trying to understand when we're integrating honors English nine, for instance. I mean, what exactly we're integrating it with now then? Are they always picking their own pair?
So it's a little bit broader than a pair. And this again is, and I appreciate the question. Integration with, let's think about it as integration with the community, with the world, with the global community, with, and if we go to, let me see the themes. We have a, so it's a slide, I think it's 16, but I think my numbers might be off. But it's called Integrated Curriculum. And it can.
Slide 11.
Slide 11. My slides are mis, misnumbered. So when we talk about integrating the curriculum, thank you, we want to look at it through these lenses. And, and this image, this idea, these thematic elements have been adapted from the College Board. These are themes that are used during our AP Capstone class. So again, this is part of preparing. When we start looking at, say we're in English nine. Say I'm in Integrated English nine and I'm reading, I'm doing a novel study. We could pull thematic elements out of that novel related to politi, politics and history, right? So it might be a work of fiction, but, you know, maybe we're, and I'm, I'm having trouble pulling one out of, but maybe it's set in World War II. Right, and we want to look at what was the geopolitical sort of.
Climate, sure.
You know, the dynamics that are informing the nature of the book. How is that reflected? And so it's a richer conversation. We could, and you really can go around that wheel and almost any, make a connection with almost any content. It's really like, how is that then relevant to the world, right? How is that cultural and social, artistic and philosophical, economic, scientific and environmental? And so not everything is going to be a good fit. But you're right, the teachers, as part of their planning process, will just sort of think about, what is the text I'm using right now? What is the standard I'm trying to teach? And where is that, where does that connect in this, in this idea? So integrating, instead of being sort of linear through just English Language Arts and History and Social Studies or Math and Science. Instead of being that linear connection or partnership, I think you called it, it's sort of broadening that definition and how we connect the content that we're learning in the classroom to, to the world and, and how that works.
Okay. I, I, I guess we can leave that for another conversation, but I'm just trying to figure out if it, so it's not really the student that's going to pick what they want to integrate. It's more of the teacher. But are we going to then be keeping civics with English at all in high school?
It's part of that uncoupling.
Okay.
Is that they can take, I think it's integrated, so they're going to take, they'll have the opportunity to take integrated World One History. So World History One, the integrated curriculum, regular World One, or as an elective, they can also take AP Human Geography.
Okay, that's at the ninth grade level, but higher, higher up. We're, so we're just talking about ninth grade.
We're just talking about ninth grade right now.
Okay.
And we're, that's what we're talking about addressing through our program four-year rollout next year. Is we're going to focus on this ninth grade cohort and their experience.
So basically, with, who comes in next year?
That's right.
Things are, things are changing with a purposeful reason. And I guess we'll listen later on what's going to happen to the ninth, 10th and 11th graders this year.
Yes, ma'am. That's, it's the continuous improvement. It is our, it is a feedback cycle, right? And we are endeavoring to be a learning organization. So we're going to start with that. And so if you are already at Osborne High School, right? We want to honor the work and the, the dreams and the hopes that you had already envisioned for yourself as you go through your course trajectory that you've already planned. We're not interrupting that plan. We're saying, starting with next year's ninth graders and then through a four-year rollout, we will slowly address these aspirational, aspirational changes for our honors program.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bresja. Thanks.
So just a few more questions, because this has been a very rich discussion. So back to the statement of interest. I noticed when reviewing our current course catalog that there are objective standards for getting into some of the higher level, that, you know, you have to have done so well in your SOL, have to have gotten such and such grade in whatever past class. Are those, so this, the statement of interest, that's not replacing any of that?
No, ma'am.
And if I did not get the requisite grade on my, you know, score on my SOL and I wanted to take an honors or an, or an AP, is, I can currently do that? Like, how does that work?
So for me, that's a conversation, right? That's a conversation, especially, there's a, there's usually a list of prerequisites, right? You got a certain score on an SOL, you've gotten a B or better in the class, there's a teacher recommendation, maybe the parent or the student feels super passionate about this. Again, that is a conversation with the school counselor, with our course specialists, right? We don't want to create a barrier, right? There are lots of reasons why students don't do well on an SOL test. We have to look at that student holistically. We have to look at multiple data points. We have to talk to the student, we have to talk to the parent. And then together make that decision if, is that the right course request for that student? So there are, there are no absolutes.
So go, on slide 17, you guys were discussing the, you know, vertical alignments and, you know, Math Six and Seven. This current kind of reshuffling of the advanced coursework at Osborne, this currently has no practical changes for what's going on at Metz right now, correct?
No.
Is Metz eventually going to get the same kind of attention that Osborne is getting, or is this?
I'm going to say, interestingly, the, the discussion at Metz, there's a really rich discussion at Metz happening right now around advanced coursework and mathematics. That kind of came from the genesis of that was the work that we started doing around Advanced Math Six. And so we have very passionate math educators at Metz who've articulated, we want to have these choices for students as they're joining us from intermediate school. And where are we going after Advanced Math Six? And what are they going to be ready for? And so they want to, they, Metz has, has said, we want them to have a just right course for them. Is Algebra One a just right course? Is it something different? Is it Math Seven? Is it Math Seven Honors? What is that? And so we, we, well, I think we were working on it today. So those, those conversations are happening concurrently.
Okay.
So I would say that the discussion of rigor has caused us all to examine our current practices. And we're asking a lot of questions about that.
On slide 18, it mentions assess, the assessment as part, the assessment process is part of a cycle that works. And this was, this may be, I should have asked this question at our last meeting, but are those assessments graded? Are those part of students' grades? That wasn't very clear to me. It's maybe a cycle that works question unless of a.
I got, I, so assessment is a, is a very large sort of construct in our division. We have everything from a, sort of a formative assessment where a teacher is just, you know, collecting quick data to inform her own instruction. And what do I need to do again tomorrow?
And those are not, that's not graded.
That is not, typically those are not graded. There might be a little quiz at the end of the week. So we have this formative, just in my classroom. And then there's assessments that I do with my grade level team, my content, my department, sort of common assessments. Sometimes those are graded. Because sometimes those are put in, you know, we'll say, let's just do like a, a multiple choice quiz, or we're going to do something like, I'm going to pull a piece of writing. I would say more than likely, those common assessments are finding their way into the grade book. The larger, sort of the next step, summative assessments, we have Division CAMs. We have, we're working on, next year, talking about doing some unit assessments and some benchmarks and those kinds of things. That's what you and I would have called a test, right? That's maybe 20 items and I've got to read some passages and things. Those are definitely finding their way into the grade book, so.
And my final question, and it is easy. I'm not familiar with the acronym EPF, EPF Service Learning. What is EPF?
Economics and Personal Finance.
Economics and Personal Finance, okay. That's it, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Bresja.
Mrs. Stevens, Vice Chair Stevens. Thank you. Thank you all. This was like a very meaty presentation with quite a bit of information in it. So if we can kind of go back to the beginning, to the civic readiness indicator. The expectation to be a Level One school division is 85%. At school.
School, yes.
Excuse me.
Because accreditation is at the school level.
Well, at NC State Division.
Right, because it's the same.
Yeah, because we have one high school. And then Level Two is 70%. And we're going to start working on our curriculum with our incoming ninth graders, current eighth graders. How, we're, we're not making changes for our students who are already in high school. They're going to continue with what they were doing. How is that going to affect our overall percentage rates under that civic readiness indicator?
So that's, that's an excellent question. So remember that that had a whole series of ORs, right? For the school, for students to get there. So, and remember, when we look back at last year's data, we were at about 53% of what was recorded, right? So, and then you got to hear Chris Taylor talk a lot about the work-based learning and the service learning and all of those things. That's the way that's also happening. And so all of those things count also, right? So if a student participates, and she said, what, 200 students or so are in a work-based learning thing right now? So that's, that, those things count when students successfully complete those things as part of a course. Those also count for the school and would be added, right? So that 32% of the students that had a CTE finisher or credential, that's still there. And then these work-based learning things would be on top of it. We had very small percentages of students in last year's cohort reported, right, as achieving work-based learning or service learning due to the efforts in CTE and at the high school to, I'm stuck on the word, I'm going to say couple, and I didn't want to, because there's been, I mean it differently, to partner up those experiences with particular courses so they will meet the state requirements. There's been a lot of work, this is happening division-wise, statewide in divisions, there's lots of conversation about how we can make sure student experiences will count. So it's not just the advanced pathways that are going to get that number up. So it's all happening kind of together and stair stepping, if that makes sense. So things can increase before those ninth graders. Things are happening now with seniors and juniors and sophomores in variety of areas. And there's nothing to stop from trying to increase the participation of those students in the advanced and dual enrollment classes at the same time. It's just this change in structure in the integrated concept is rolling out in a cohort model.
Okay, so basically what it is, is we've got this percentage who were those advanced study kiddos. And then we're adding on top of that all of our CTE, all of our ORs under that civic readiness indicator.
Right, so if you saw where we said there were like 33% of the students did AP or dual enrollment, another 32% did CTE. And again, there could be overlap. We have students who do all of these things. And then we had a very small number that were work, met the requirement for the work-based learning or service learning. Increasing that is going to help. Increasing, you saw all the things she talked about with the CTE pathways, increasing that helps. And at the same time, the school and everyone is encouraging more students to be doing advanced placement and dual enrollment as it currently stands. This will have a longer-term impact, but also there's short-term efforts underway.
So moving forward with our students who are going to be coming into ninth grade, our, our current eighth graders who will be our ninth grade cohort, the 2027 graduate issue year, how are we supporting them in making that decision to choose those more challenging AP Integrated Honors courses? Because anecdotally, what has been heard in some circles is that students are concerned that those AP, those Integrated Honors courses are going to be too difficult. And there's this big concern, if I take these courses that are too difficult and I don't do well in them, I'm not going to be able to take that next step after high school. So how are we supporting our students in making that decision to make that leap to that more challenging instructional setting?
Introduce Ms. Carolyn Waddell. She is our gifted resource teacher and mighty team member here.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to jump in and speak to this because I had the pleasure of speaking with advanced students in the eighth grade at Metz yesterday, along with Mrs. Taylor. And it was really exciting to see their enthusiasm for now having all of these options to take a sort of menu approach to advanced classes instead of being locked into these given tracks. So we have made ourselves available, certainly willing to come back to any advisory. We're working with their teachers to counsel them on which classes they should be taking. I think we were sort of cheerleading them into jumping into those classes yesterday, and there was a lot of enthusiasm. But to answer your question about how we're supporting them, we have been really examining whether the courses we're offering in ninth grade are adequately preparatory for subsequent years. We are proposing a rather dramatic change, well, we're proposing a significant change to the course sequence in social studies. Where nationwide, we generally see higher performance on AP scores and, and greater engagement in AP. Right now, we have our students taking, our advanced students are all sort of put into ninth grade AP Human Geography. And we're making the suggestion that we design a curriculum for a almost pre-AP model preparatory Integrated Honors World History One so that they are set up with the prerequisite history knowledge as well as historiographical skills so that long-term, they go into 10th, 11th, 12th feeling more prepared. So we're trying to look at the core sequence for ninth graders in a way that will build that confidence by making sure that we're building those foundational academic skills.
So that we're building those when they're seventh, eighth grade? So that by the time it's time to start choosing those ninth grade classes, they've already got that foundation to head in that direction?
Yeah, I would also add that the work from our steering committee with our Advanced Math Six, right? Like, we're updating that curriculum, right? And, and making sure that that is rigorous for our students, right? So I would say even earlier than the seventh grade level, right there at Math Six Advanced, or really starting at the fifth grade level, we're updating that. Also, I will, I want to add that at Metz, we did increase our IMS and our IH program as well this past school year. So before, there was just one cohort of about 20 students that were in the programming. And now we have two groups of about 25 students that we have. So with those students moving up, that will, again, make them more comfortable to jump into these high school classes.
It's musical podium.
If I could also just share, I had a conversation today with the Director of Counseling here at Metz. And we discussed just. and we discussed just renewing our efforts in terms of how we are articulating between our intermediate and middle school, and our middle school and our high school with our counseling teams, to make sure that we are providing, you know, advice and really good counseling to our students and encouraging them to be challenging themselves in course and making sure that they're choosing the correct courses that will challenge them and give them the best opportunity to achieve their goals.
Okay. Okay, thank you on that. Now, we're talking about taking our students and kind of pulling them up to a higher level. And a lot of the conversation tonight has been those kids who are already kind of moving in that direction, on that track. How are we doing, what are our plans to take our Gen Ed kiddos, our ELs, our SPED kiddos, and our duly identified kiddos, and get them moving in that same direction?
A core purpose of this reimagining of our advanced pathways is to cast a broader net on students who will participate in our Integrated Honors courses in ninth grade. How do we do that? Well, we do have some prerequisites because we want to support students and be, we want to set them up for success. But we also are talking with our teachers for teacher recommendation. We're going to the school and talking with them in their classes. We're doing these, you know, curriculum nights and these parent fairs. And I think that, you know, importantly, an answer to this question and to your last, is that while we are going to be preparing them earlier in their career to engage in this challenging coursework, we also have to support them. It's the social-emotional piece of this, the willingness to take the risk, the willingness to what we call fail forward, right? That we learn from error analysis, we learn from our mistakes, right? That is building a resilience and a stamina and those interpersonal skills and creating a peer group that will support you and understanding that there are multiple modalities. There are multiple ways for me to show you what I know. We need to be looking at all of our students in our classrooms and casting that net and saying to the young student in the fifth grade, have you thought about, you're a great writer, you know, and encouraging that creative and critical thinking and that high level of academic rigor in the earlier grades so that by the time they're at Metz and we're saying, have you thought about doing this? When a teacher says to them, have you thought about doing this? It's not a fearful thing, it's a, I can do this.
Musical microphones.
I wouldn't be able to get through a board meeting without talking about Cycle That Works. But, you know, when you're talking about casting a wider net, and this speaks to the work that is happening in schools right now with Cycle That Works. One of the roles that we learned about is our opportunity agent. And so making sure that we are meeting the needs of every single one of our learners and making sure that the strategies that we're using at a very young age are preparing students to be on grade level, above grade level, and moving them forward and accelerating their learning, starting in the elementary school. So if we want students to be in an AP class in high school, that doesn't start at their freshman year, that starts at their kindergarten year. And so that is our focus as we are really looking at how are we preparing, making sure that kids are getting what they need, when they need it, at the earliest age possible.
Okay. Now, I'm a teacher, you know, I have my area of expertise, but I know that even as a teacher, there are subject areas I would not be able to help my children in. So we have these kiddos who get enrolled in these higher-level classes, our APR dual enrollment classes, and they're in high school. And they've got a larger workload outside of the classroom setting. How are we going to support them outside of the classroom setting? Because my child is in high school, is in, I don't have a child in high school right now, but hypothetically, my child is in high school, is in a dual enrollment class in math and science, not my area of expertise. I cannot help my child at home because I don't have that prerequisite skill set. What systems do we have in place, or are we going to put in place to support those students outside of the classroom so that they can continue to be successful?
I think that's a great question, because I think that we are going to have to examine the, all of the systems that will be impacted by this change. I know that currently, we have in place Saturday Learning Seminar. And that would be, that would be the go-to place, right? We would be able to use that seminar. We have opportunities for students to connect with teachers one-to-one and just, and use peer teaching. If we provide instruction in small groups, that's an opportunity to make a connection with a peer, to have time to work in group projects, so there's peer support for that. But I think your question points out, what more can we do beyond the constructs that we have in place, like Saturday Learning Seminar? Let me just turn to my people. Okay, so we're looking at some grants and some grant opportunities for some additional support that we might be able to bring on board as well.
Okay, great. Oh, just another two questions. Career strategies for the early-release students, where those first six weeks, they're essentially learning workplace skills, soft skills. So the first four, six weeks of the school year, they will have a regular-length school day. How will that impact our students who go into twelfth grade, already having jobs and already needing to leave early to go to work?
Great, that's an excellent question. And so that might look a little different depending on where the student's at. So for example, if we have a student that works a full-time job, or I want to say full-time job, but a good twenty, twenty-plus hours a week, we might have to meet every other day, third period, or maybe we'll meet every other day, fourth period. Or if the student has a double block where they're taking off third and fourth, we could just use one of those periods and work with the employer to still continue the hours that they're getting. So it's going to look a little different. We're piloting it next year, so I think we're going to find some challenges that we're going to have to face. But I think also there's a lot of flexibility and willingness on behalf of our business partners to make it work. And they've shown that in a lot of different conversations and events and things that we've had where that interaction has taken place.
Okay, thank you on that. And then just one last question. And this is a term I'm familiar with, but it's another one of those educational terms that we use that the general public may not understand, zone of proximal development.
Oh. Right, I think I got a little carried away there.
That's okay.
Okay, so there's a time when the teacher is the only one that can do the skill. And there's a time when the student is able to do that skill independently. And then there's the place where with enough support from the teacher, the student begins to be able to apply the skill, right? It's the we-do. It is the place where, when you learn how to ride a bike, right? And your trusted adult was running behind you, and they had their hand. First, they start with their hand on the steering wheel, and they've got it on the seat, and they're running with you, right? And they're doing most of the work. And then as soon as you kind of get a hang of it, they'll let go. And it's uncomfortable. The student is, the person riding the bike is a little afraid, right? They're a little exhilarated. They really want to be able to do it by themselves. And eventually, the trusting adult just has a hand on the back of the seat. And then usually, we let go and not tell them for a little while, right? And let them ride. But that place where I am learning a new skill and I am supporting you in such a way that you can feel successful, and most importantly, you can feel safe while you're demonstrating, while you're taking that new skill on, that is essentially the zone of proximal development. It is the place where it's a little fearful, we're a little afraid, but we're learning. And I think that we've all can look back in our lives at a place where we have felt like that, right? And that is the most important social-emotional moment, for the student to feel supported. And that it's okay to fail, right? That it's okay to, because the most important skill there is trying again.
I agree. Okay. Thank you. There's a lot to digest. I'm sure there will be many more conversations on this, and I know that this, just like with the strategic plan, there will be some tweaking and some adjusting as we go through next year being year one. It's the foundational year. So I think that's the year that we're going to be seeing some kinks and some kinks getting worked out as we move forward. But this will be assessed continuously as we move forward?
Absolutely. We recognize that this is a learning, we're learning by doing exactly what we're asking our students to do. And so what's important there is communication, feedback loops, and a willingness to do what's best for kids.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. And I just have three quick questions. The new career strategies course offered to which grade level? Is it just twelfth graders?
We're focusing on twelfth grade, but we have an eleventh grader who meets the graduation requirements and is ready. We'll work with them.
Great. And these materials here?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor, are, these are not available online, right?
Oh, that's such a good question. So we're working on our website right now to update it so that those materials are available to the public. So working on translation, working on getting those posted with our IT team onto the website. So hopefully, by the time scheduling is in full force, all this will be available.
Okay, so rolling out by first week in February when we have the orientation?
That's our hope. That's our hope. But I'm not the best at technology.
That's all right. We'll get there. And my last question is, if there are any parents that have heard pieces of this and still have questions, where should they direct their questions?
They should call me.
Okay.
Chris Taylor, ctaylormcpsva.org. Always happy to take any questions, concerns, calls.
Okay, and the honors courses, AP courses, would they?
I think the same answer. I think that they should email me, lgoldson@mcpsova.org. They can look on our website. Find me under the Department of Student Achievement and Instruction. We also have Mr. Vargas and Ms. Waddell.
Okay. Are the counselors aware of all this, so they'll be able to answer questions?
Yes, they are.
Very good.
Mr. Yarborough is one of the members of the steering committee.
Wonderful.
It's wonderful.
So if there, Ms. Williams, do you have a question?
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, thank you. So thank you very much for that presentation. All of you clarified many of my questions. And many of the questions that were asked here, including Ms. DeBeepie's question about integration. I had to actually look that up, the difference between honors and Integrated Honors. And what I found was it just kind of mentioned freshmen, whether it's freshman in high school, freshman in college. So one of my questions then is, I realize this presentation is for rising ninth graders going forward. Will, but we're not doing integration in honors courses for rising ten, eleven, twelve. Is that correct?
No, their course catalog is going to stay the same.
The course catalog is going to stay the same. So we're going to still offer at Osborne, honors English eleven, twelve, honors world history, honors USVA history, honors USVS government, honors earth science, human anatomy and physics, honors pre-calc, honors calc I.
I'm going to clarify for you about honors calc, because calculus is in itself an advanced-level course.
Yes.
So like if you get there, it's already essentially like a college-level course. So I'm not, I'm going to get back with you on the answer about the, if we're going to call it honors calc or if it's just going to be calculus.
Okay. And then, just, this is a clarification question. The chart that shows the total of all advanced courses, AP dual enrollment and honors, that total of one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine is all, is inclusive of Metz or only Osborne?
It's only Osborne. That's a good question. Those are all numbers from the high school.
Okay. At Metz, we are going to currently, whatever honors courses are being offered at Metz, will they be offered next year at Metz?
Yes.
Okay. And then one more question. Is there any leeway from the state, since we're having to report on the CCCRI next year? Is there any leeway from the state as far as growth, or?
So that's a good question. And so the CCCRI was supposed to be rolled out as part of accreditation. It's been pushed back a couple of times due to the pandemic. And so, no, it's part of accreditation beginning next year. Everything related to growth with accreditation is kind of to be determined, you know, in some ways. And so there's some things, so when they introduce something the first year, how it counts the first year, we'll get the exact decision rules on that. But this is something that's been coming, which is why there have been systems gearing up to make sure that for this graduating cohort, things are captured. So otherwise, it'll fit, eventually, there'll be three-year averages and things like that, but they don't, you know, set it up quite that way at the outset.
Okay. And just simply an observation, I looked at our SOL passing scores because I wanted to see how, what percentage of our students passed with the advanced, the advanced number scored. And it was interesting that we're pretty strong in history. If I remember past years, we were pretty strong in history. And so ten percent scored at the advanced level, which was higher than English, writing. Well, actually, writing, we do really well, too. And it was interesting that nine hundred and sixty-six people or students take the advanced courses, and then that's where we kind of scored high for ourselves. And also, writing, how high we scored in writing. And I'm wondering if that has anything to do with the Writing Center, the Eagle Writing Center. And then my question is, do we still have the Eagles Writing Center? Okay.
I'm being told yes.
Anyway, you're like, I don't even know. But great. And then maybe we could, in reference to the math and integrating, maybe we could develop or reach out to the Education Foundation and find some resources for a math-type, Eagles math-type center. Anyway.
That's an exciting idea.
One more question. Early release for CTE, is it, is there a requirement? I, is there a requirement for students to have to go to work or have to take care of a sibling, or have to have a reason in order to be qualified for early release?
Right. There are requirements for early release, and I'm going to turn to Tara Eason. Do you know those offhand? Can you come share? There are. And we were actually just gathering documents for our, to be ready for scheduling. And so Tara has been working on the application form for early release, so I'm going to let her share.
Okay, so some of the requirements for early release are the student has to have something in their IEP saying that they need to be released early from school for some kind of medical reason. Another reason could be that they have to go to work, and that is connected to a family hardship, or maybe some other kind of family hardship. So, and I pulled all of these from the policies and regulations that, you know, from Manassas City, and attached them to the application for early release that we hope to give to students and families next year so that they understand that early release is not just something that is granted and signed off on for every student that requests it, that there are some, you know, requirements that they have to meet to get that privilege.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that information. If you'd like, we can get you a copy of that. I can look it up, too. Yeah, no worries. All right, thank you so much.
And thanks to the whole team presenting tonight and for stepping in and answering more questions. And yeah, fist bumps to everybody. All right. School Board members, comments? And I'll start with Ms. DeBeepie.
Good evening, everyone who has joined us today. First, I'd like to say congratulations to all those who are recognized, and especially to all the principals who care so much about the students that are in each of the schools in our division. I'd also like to say thanks once again for the presentation on the CTE courses and the new curriculum that is going to be given to the OHS students. And lastly, I'd just like to say to please continue to support our students by attending their events, senior nights, I think there was a senior night actually today at Osborne, and any other ways that can make our students feel seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeBeepie. Ms. Island, do you have comments this evening?
Yes, I do. I'd like to say thank you to all the teachers and principals for coming out tonight. Congratulations, and I'd also like to say... Congratulations. And I'd also like to say, I'd like to say thank you a lot to the principals because of what happened. I mean, the, of Mr. Of, sorry, Mayor, Mayor Davis. Yeah, sorry, for last, last week. I'd also like to say thank you for the plans for CTE. I was excited to see those and everything that we will have for the ninth graders. I'd also like to say, I'd also like to remind everybody of the S, I mean, the E3 event tomorrow. That's going to be discussing. Yes, bullying and internet safety. And I also like, I'm also really excited for the spelling bee. I also like to say thank you to everybody that came out tonight. And I'd like to wish everybody a prosperous Lunar New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Island. Mrs. Brooks?
I want to say congratulations to the nominees for Teacher of the Year. I know we have a lot of phenomenal teachers and it's nice to see that we can, you know, take chances to congratulate them on their hard work. And thank you to all of our principals, assistant principals, deans, everyone who's, you know, working in administration and, you know, really take care of all the kids in our community. And thank you so much for such a wonderful presentation on the CTE and honors and just different pathways and all the classes that, you know, you guys are working on. I really, you know, you know, I look forward to watching this grow and I appreciate all the information you guys presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bressia?
We had a lot of people in the room today that deserve congratulations, our Teacher of the Year nominees, our principals. We have people who weren't in the room to congratulate the senior night that I believe the student representative mentioned, the seniors for indoor track. We missed your senior night. We're sorry. But we're thinking of you. Congratulations. And also congratulations to our, our OHS art exhibitors who weren't able to be here. But we are all very proud. And thank you to the presentation team who really, this was a substantial presentation. Thank you so much for answering all of our questions and putting together such a detailed offering. I really appreciated that. I also wanted to shout out to Hayden Elementary. They hosted me last week. I spent a full day as a kindergartner there. So I really appreciated the warm welcome and the chance to be in a kindergarten classroom again. That was great. And I also wanted to thank everybody at Mayfield Metz, Baldwin Elementary, and Baldwin Intermediate and Williams. I joined Dr. Newman for a walkthrough of those schools. And that was a great, enjoyable experience. So thank you, everyone, for that. And I also wanted to shout out, today during our consent agenda, we had our gifts, grants, and bequests. And there were many very generous donations in there. And I know those individual donors have, I'm sure, been thanked already, but I wanted to use my school member time to say thank you. You know, really appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Spall?
Yes, I would just like to say that I've also traveled schools the last couple of weeks, probably more extensively than I have in a while. And everywhere I look, I'm proud of everywhere, everyone, everywhere, all the time. Things have been going really well and I'm, I'm just really happy to be part of Manassas City Public Schools because I think that the kids and the staff and the teachers are working really hard. I was happy to see the referenced master teacher designation for these Washington Post Teacher of the Year nominees and to see so many ESOL teachers included in those nominations. And just a special shout out to Mr. Jaffrey and Ms. Oliver, who I, I know personally, they're doing a great job. I didn't know Ms. Oliver was around. And just thanks to the principals also for their welcoming culture and all the work that they're doing at, at our schools for our kids. And finally, shout out to Saturday Learning Seminar. It's such a valuable program that we have and I just can't say enough good things about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mrs. Williams, comments this evening?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair, yes. Thank you, Ms. Tabibi and Ms. Island, for your comments and your input and insight. As always, we appreciate it. And I appreciate Ms. Island mentioning the Parent E3 series that's coming up tomorrow night, right, tomorrow night. I appreciate that because I was going to mention that. And definitely congratulations to all of our spotlight recipients, award winners, nominees, et cetera. I, I just think our, our students who, who have so much talent, especially in the art industry, it's just so exciting to see, see their work. And, and mentioning that, Gerani's, I want to really put out a shout out for Gerani's. The museum has been closed for renovations and Gerani's allowed our Manassas City Public School Arts exhibit to, to be hosted there. So I appreciate to our, our, our community for that partnership. Principals, your job has got to be extremely difficult right now with all these changes. Not only do you keep our students the main thing every day, you also have to keep your teachers and staff the main thing every day. So definitely a shout out to you all. I really appreciate your hard work and effort and it does not go unnoticed. PTAs. I have no, I've just noticed on social media, when I talk to PTA presidents, they are in desperate need in every school for our community parents to, to help get engaged, get involved. So please reach out to your individual schools, check their website, Google, or on Facebook you can search, search for your school's PTA and, and get involved. You get to know more people that way. You get to understand more of the opportunities. The schools do provide our students. So please get involved. And with that, Ms. Chair, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you to the CTE crew for your presentation and your ability to answer our questions. And I celebrate the thoughtful discussion that was here today. I also want to recognize all the principals for your commitment to excellence and your commitment to the students in our community. After that, I just want to say good night and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Stevens?
I'm going to say ditto to what everyone else has said because it's all been said. And I would say I'm really excited to see the advanced pathways in CTE, the changes that are coming forward. And I am also glad that it's not going, that our students who are already at Osborne won't be negatively impacted by any of the changes that are coming. That they won't have to make changes because they know that that was a big concern. So I really appreciate that that thought was going into it. But this looks really exciting for our kids who are going to be entering ninth grade next year. And there are so many more options available to them that are going to be more tailored to who they are, what they're interested in, and what they're cared, what they care about. So I'm really excited to hear more about this as it goes into being. And I think some of the CTE pathways we have are really exciting. I, I never thought that fine arts could be a CTE pathway. If I had known that when I was in high school, I would probably have a very different life right now. But this is all very exciting. And I really like that we are a school division that can do this for all of our students and that our students are not as likely to be lost in the crowd because we are one high school. We are one Osborne. So the future looks pretty good for our kiddos and for our schools. So thank you for the work you've done, the work you're doing, and the work you'll be doing in the future to get our kids ready to be successful high school graduates. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. And I will wrap it up with echoing everybody's thoughts. I celebrate our principals during Principal Appreciation Week and throughout the year, along with our educators and our students and all the staff throughout our schools. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Chair, I move that we adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks. The school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.